Board meeting for October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Alphabetical roll call, please.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmore here.
Kevin Hein here.
All right, Carolyn Mario Town Council and Town planning Sandra Thayer here as well. We'll start with continuing the hearing at eighty-two Border Street. Someone from Weston and Sampson here.
I don't see anybody from Weston and Sampson as of yet, but it is just six-thirty-one, so. It could be a minute or two late.
Well, I wanted to start with them, so let's give them another minute. Has everybody seen their updated peer review?
Weston and Sampson is here. Adam, do you need me to pull anybody else in from your team?
Oh, thank you. Is, uh.
Kara, perhaps?
Kara Lamb, please, as well as Nino Di Nuno, if he's available. I know that Mr. O'Mara is in the audience. I don't know whether he wants to be promoted or not, but if we need him, are you going to promote him at that time?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, well, if we could start. Jim Reardon, if you could pull up your letter. And just briefly summarize what we still have, well, summarize. Both the entire letter, but really focus on what's still any outstanding issues that we might have.
Certainly. Hopefully that's visible. Just gonna make it a little larger.
And Jim, just before you start, I'd just like to make Tom aware that Deirdre is coming in right now.
All right, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Thank you for having us here tonight and helping with this peer review. We appreciate the opportunity to do that. This is our second round of peer review on this project. The first one was back in September. I was away, so it was presented by an member, another member of the team. Let's see, this is focused on eighty-two Border Street, which. I'm sure the applicant will present more about the purpose of that project, but in general, it's redevelopment of a property. That is currently a both storage building area. And will be converted to a small boutique hotel. We reviewed materials. Originally, materials we got were from July twenty-eighth. We got some additional materials in September five. Those two sets of materials were what comprised the materials for our first review. We've since received materials for October ten and October eleven. On October eleven, we got two sheets, but they were for the same site plan set. So they're just listed here, C four zero and C seven-two. From Merrill Engineers. And again, the other ones were from October tenth, and we downloaded those from. The municipal planning board website. We looked at general bylaw compliance, site plan layout, utility and stormwater management, constructability. Traffic and circulation, and then architecture as well. Landscape architecture was included in site plan layout. So going through this, getting at a pretty high level. Zoning requirements, there were several comments we had last time. They're essentially each addressed. In our opinion, they were satisfied by this last set of review materials. Site plan layout, there's still a couple of things outstanding. So if we go down to two-point-one-point-three. The sidewalks. So the applicant noted that the site plan sheet, C four point zero, had been revised to show. The. The maximum slope and slope cross-section for ADA compliance. We agreed with that, but then we also wanted to get a detail of the ADA ramp. They provided us a detail of the warning strip. But we didn't get the detail of the ramp. I think that the applicant contacted me this afternoon, and I think they have that material, but I haven't seen it yet. And then we go down to two-point-one-point-seven. Which was titled materials. And so in our previous comment, we noted that there were. Several items that that we hadn't been provided for review that related to materials. We got a response back that noted. A gate located adjacent to the entrance. A low fence surrounding the HVAC. And steel landscape edging. We didn't get. Information that showed those details. So we're, that's what we're requesting at this point. So if we could be provided with those for. Review as initially requested, then we'd be able to review those and provide our feedback on them. This item two-point-one-point-nine demolition and erosion control plan. So we had asked for information. And details regarding the erosion control barrier detail. The applicant noted, you know, narratively. What they were going to do related to constructed, construction methodology. And site plan, site plan protection diagram, but we didn't actually get those for review, so we're asking for those as well. Then two-point-one-point-ten. So this also had to do with the site plan layout. We received a comment back that said additional details and notes had been added to the revised. Site plan to clarify pavement and sidewalk construction and ADA compliance. So this is related to the items two-point-one-point-two and two-point-one-point-three that we were talking about before. They had requested that they make some of this information a condition of approval. In our opinion, that is okay to make that. A condition of approval, but we would, of course, leave that to the planning board's discretion as to whether they want to do that or not. Continuing on down into stormwater. So this is a fairly straightforward item, three-point-one-point-ten, I think it is. This is the illicit discharge compliance statement. So we didn't receive that. That's necessary under. Massachusetts stormwater requirements. So we asked that that be provided. And then the last item has to do with architecture. Five-point-two. So the applicant noted that the existing finished floor elevations are providing. Are provided on sheets A two-zero-one through two-eleven. To clarify, we wanted the existing elevations, and so we ask that that information. Be provided. We think it would be beneficial to include those elevations on the existing floor plans as well. And that is, that is essentially it for our review.
Thank you, Jim.
Very welcome.
Tony Brodsky, you want to respond to those things that are still outstanding?
Oh, thank you, Chair Callahan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky, and as you know, I represent Co Lobster LLC. And just so that the recording is complete. Tom Sullivan is the manager of the LLC. Amen O'Mara is our project manager. Susan Holy and Karina Martinez are architects. Kara Lamb, our landscape architect. Deborah Keller is our registered professional engineer and Nino Di Nuno, the general contractor. And I'll defer to Deb Keller to respond in specifics. I believe that some of the information that Weston Sampson wanted to review was actually submitted by us. So the illicit discharge statement was submitted, is on the town website. As well as the construction methodology and site protection plans were submitted several weeks ago. So I'm not sure why that didn't get to Weston Sampson. I'll defer to Deb with respect to particulars. Our general read of the peer review was that all of the substantive issues had been addressed. And we've got some minor pieces of information that need to be provided. Really details about things like the ADA ramp, a gate, a fence, and the edging. So we have, as you appreciate, a desire to. Close the public hearing and get a decision on site plan approval as soon as we can. So if there's a way to work through this process through conditions of providing that additional information. I suggest or would ask that the planning board entertain that. Deb is also prepared to go through the sort of project changes that developed in this round of additional revisions, if you're interested, but we can shorten.
That would be great if you could go through the changed and updated documents.
Thank you. Happy to do so. We obviously provided updated stormwater report and O and M plan, an updated landscaping plan. Our written response, or I should say Merrill's written response to Weston Sampson's peer review, at least the first round. The revised plan set and various details. So Deb, can I turn it over to you to briefly go through those changes, please?
Sure, if I could share my screen, I can hop right through the site plan set to start. Okay. So some of the changes that we started on the site plan set. See, I'm gonna. Sit through was to, I think these were, may have been comments from other boards, but. We tried to combine them all into one plan set, was sort of providing a little bit more clarity on. The resources that are on the site, so you see a little bit more color. With respect to the wetland resources on the property on the existing conditions plan. We also did provide a wetland resource plan so that we could go through the resources with conservation. This was our erosion, erosion control and demolition plan. This was focused more on the landward erosion controls. And I will defer to Nino to speak towards the more. Water-dependent. Method, construction methodology that Adam had just briefly mentioned. So. Site plan review, I'm going to zoom in just a little bit closer so we can see. So the. Main change that we, we did on the site was we did raise. The Eastwick and Main Inn plus the associated surrounding decks. Up to elevation, did I hop one more, fourteen for clarification? Yeah, elevation fourteen. This addresses. Some of the upcoming. Flood. And building code. I guess revisions that are coming up, so we wanted to get ahead of that. With that being said, we had some minor adjustments to the. Walkway. This was originally a walkway up to the main entrance. Now with this raise in the elevation, we, we had to convert this to a ADA ramp with railings. So that, that was one change. We did look at. As all the parking stayed the same, I think we just provided some clarification on parking sizes. And meeting the requirements there. We did go through, and I believe it's in our narrative. Have one more sheet. It's our last page in our narrative. We provided a detailed table of the. Site coverages, so going through and explaining what was building, what was pavement in the existing conditions. Or deck over ledge and water versus the new buildings, landscaping, decking, et cetera. So that, again, the end result of that all is that we have. An increase in pervious surface, not impervious, but pervious surface on the site. Which goes to a lot of the additional landscaping that's being added, as well as some of the open deck areas. And we did add. The cobble around the new building here is, is, is to be pervious. And another. Change that we made is this parking area here. The goal here would be to, to have that be shelled driveway area. And knowing we wanted to try to keep that as contained as possible. We are using what they call gravel pave. I think I'll zip right to that detail quickly just to show you. So it's like a gridded, you know, plastic grid area, and we can fill that with the shells, so that will hold it up. Try to keep it in place as much as possible. Obviously, that will be a maintenance. Something that will have to be maintained over, over, over time. Let's see, I'll hop back again. So we did. One more. So we did provide a site plan distance as requested. And then. See, so one of the things that Weston and Sampson did mention that we were working on today and looking for clarification. Is we do have. You know, it is. A unique area for grading, so we are adding some additional spot grades to clarify. The sidewalk grading to make sure that we are providing ADA compliance everywhere. So with some added spot grades. So that's, that's what. That should address that two-point-one-three. Think. Those are all of the changes on the site plans that were made. That, that covers all of them. As for any changes to architecuals, I will. That to other team members, or whether we would like to speak with Nino with construction.
So Chair Callahan, it's Adam Brodsky. If I can add some color to the. Elevation of the main and eastward in buildings. The project was designed to comply with the current ninth edition building code with respect to flood protection. After consulting with Mr. Hallen, he's asked us to design to the tenth building code. Which coincidentally was just published and becomes effective at the end of the year, essentially the beginning of. Twenty-twenty-five. So we increased the design flood elevation to comply with the tenth building code, which obviously provides additional flood protection. There is one issue which isn't reflected in the written materials, but was raised as a concern of the planning board at our last meeting. Which is what to do with guest vehicles during major storms, which may result in flooding. And we had agreed to come up with a plan. We've yet to be able to reduce that in writing. Mr. O'Mara consulted with the town regarding using the parking lot at Government Island. But candidly, that became too complicated. And so we have a simple solution and hope that satisfies the board's concern. It's in fact something that I've taken from a large project I'm working on in Hull, as I think I mentioned at the last meeting. Hull often requires that residential, larger residential projects as a condition of approval. Have a plan in order to relocate residents' vehicles. And so what we had proposed in Hull for this project was to relocate those residential vehicles. To the MBTA parking lot in Hull. And we proposed doing the same thing here. We propose. Relocating any, any guest vehicles that may remain, because we don't anticipate that guests will actually be staying at the hotel during a major storm event. But if there are any guest vehicles that we actually relocate them to the MBTA parking lot in North Situate. And shuttle the guests back if they want to continue to stay. The MBTA did approve that in Hull, and I don't think there'll be any issue in this instance. The MBTA said we have no problem with people parking a lot, provided the parking fee is paid. And so we all agree to pay the parking fees for any vehicles that we need to relocate. And so I think it's an elegant and simple solution to the problem. We know that that parking is available. It's publicly available parking, and we just, we know the MBTA is fine with it. And we just need to pay for that parking out there daily rate. So we suggest that that. Be approved as a special condition of site plan approval, and hopefully that will address the guest parking issue. Again, we don't think it's going to be a real-world issue, because we don't anticipate guests staying there during that kind of weather event. But we have a simple solution to that problem. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding any of the changes or any of the additional information. That's really the substance of I think of what we're planning on presenting this evening.
Jim, do you have any further things to say in response to what Ms. Keller had presented?
Thank, thank you very much, Chair Callahan. I do have, I guess, a couple of questions. After. Attorney Brodsky noted that, that those materials were on the application website. I pulled that up because I have my computer handy. I did find the illicit discharge statement. I think that's a recent addition to the website. I don't believe that was on there before. So we appreciate seeing that. I don't see the information, the other information, and so I'm wondering if somebody could. Indicate to me from the applicant's side, or indicate to us from the applicant's side, where that information might be contained.
I, I know, Mr. Reardon, that the, the. I know that the cover letter from Merrill also included the construction methodology, as well as the site protection plan. And the email, the confirmatory email that we sent to the planning department contained that information. I, I don't have access to the ability to access the website to see if it's on there. It's, it's been presented. I should also note that I do have a note here from our architects. That the existing elevation heights are actually on the architectural plans. And I'd invite Karina or Susan to weigh in and maybe we can show you where those elevations are.
As we pointed out, sheets A two-zero-one through A two-eleven. The way that we set up the sheets for the planning board review is that we have the existing elevations. Over the proposed elevations. And so if you go to the, let's just say, A two-zero-one, you'll see that that would be the Eastwick. Building west elevation existing, which shows the existing first floor finish height at eight feet, eleven inches. And then as you go through the elevation sheets, it's set up with the existing on top and proposed below.
Karina, would it help to share screen and show those? We can take this down, Deb?
Oh, sure.
Can everyone see my screen? So this would be the west elevation of the Eastwood Inn, and this image up here is the existing elevation. So we set it up like a before and after. This is the existing west elevation. And this is the existing floor elevation here, eight feet, eleven. And then you go down here, this is what, this does not show the revised. Fourteen-foot proposed elevation that we changed it to. This is what we had submitted before at elevation twelve. So this, this will be changed to elevation fourteen for the new elevation. And then as you just go through the, the other elevations. Existing above. Proposed below. And so that's all of the Eastwick, and then if we go to the main inn. The main in existing floor elevation would be eight foot, eight inches. And then, as I mentioned, with the Eastwick Inn, we're going to be bringing that finished floor to elevation fourteen. So the, the two buildings and the decks will all be at the elevation fourteen for, as proposed.
Okay, that's helpful. I'll run that by the architect that did the review and point this out to them. And see if they have further questions.
All right, is there anything else? If not, I'll go to the members of the board. Amy, I see your hand up, so we'll start with you.
I'd just like to have a confirmation on the roof line of the adjusted building.
Ms. Glassmore, do you want the, the height of the buildings?
Yeah, please.
The, the height is, is non-conforming presently. It's going to go up another foot. And we're going to seek and have sought relief from the zoning board for that. But I'll ask Susan and Karina to, to show the building height.
You don't need to do that. I, I accept what you're saying.
Okay, so I, I guess in a, for the main inn building. We are showing that the. The height is thirty-three feet and six inches from the main inn's first floor level. So from the first floor to the, the ridge height. Is going to be thirty-three feet, six inches.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, Tom, I believe there's an updated landscape plan that we haven't seen, and I think there's a landscape architect here. To go through that, if that would be.
Adam, if you could.
Oh, sure. I'll ask Ms. Lamb to please describe the changes. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm, I'm going to ask permission to share my screen with you. All right, so I'll just address the changes that were requested. As you can see here, this is the landscape plan. Nothing really has changed. The questions that were in the peer review involved the ramp. Nothing really has changed. The questions that were in the peer review involved the ramp, which is here, and just a few items such as the deck. There's a new, this gate here. Sorry, you can't see my cursor. There's a gate here for this deck. And I will, I'm prepared to show those right now, actually. So we go to the existing site photo. This is the existing deck. And the question was, what is the gate going to look like? And it's basically going to match the existing deck. And so it would look something similar to this here, a very simple design that would go basically right here at this walkway. And the other question that was asked was the HVAC units, which is right here by the gatehouse. I was asked, what would those look like? And so I have a photo that I can share. It would, this is just a first pass at what an enclosure fence could be. It's just a regular board fence with, you know, four-inch boards. So very simple. And I can show you the detail that was provided as well. The detail that's provided is the changes are on L 7.0 here on the bottom. Detail five. I've redrawn the steps showing the section here with the handrail. And this was awesome. This is the ramp that I had mentioned earlier where they asked for a blow up of what it would look like. And then this is the gate here on the bottom left. And then this would be the stockade wood panel fence that would block the HVAC units. And then the last, I think one of the last questions that was asked was about the landscape edging. I have included the landscape edging on all, on at least two of the details. And I've even pulled up a standard detail that my company uses. We would use border concepts of just a standard steel landscape edging, eighth inch thick. So nothing fancy, really. So I hope that that addresses all of the landscape points.
All right. Bart, is there anything else you wanted to ask about?
No, thank you.
Okay. Kevin, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to pick up the topic about the height of this building again. I was seeing drawings that were put in front of me that indicated the height would be in excess of, I think, 45 feet in some areas. Other areas would be in excess of 40 feet. And our current bylaws, correct me if I'm wrong, please, are to a ridgeline height of 35 feet. The existing property, as I understood and it's been presented, is already non-conforming in that regard. It has some elevations of the ridgeline in excess of 35 feet, somewhere in the order of 37 feet. But I'd like clarification as to what these elevations are at ridgeline for all the ridgelines in this property. Maximum elevation would be helpful, please. I would see in some things that were shown in front of me that showed things in excess of 45 feet. Certainly in excess of what our current bylaws, 35 feet.
Sure, I'd be happy to explain the drawings if I could share my screen.
And Mr. Heine, I should note that the new building we're constructing, the boathouse building, is conforming. But you're absolutely correct. The existing main and eastward buildings are presently non-conforming with respect to building height. And we are going up for flood protection. And that is the request for a special permit to extend that non-conforming condition that's presently before the zoning board.
Okay, so if everyone can see my screen. I want to point out that if you're referring to this 45 feet 6 inches, that elevation height is based on the surveyor's elevation height. So the, if you can kind of look down, so it's not to Mrs. Glassmeyer's question about the building height. It's the 33-foot 6 dimension is what you're understanding your building height to be from the first floor. But the numbers that run along these elevation tags, if you can see down here, the main level first floor is at elevation 12. That's based off of the civil engineer's survey elevation from ground zero. Deb Kelleher might be able to explain that a little better than I can. But it's, Deb, if you want to.
Sure. So, so for example, it would be, as Susan mentioned before, you have your existing. And as Adam mentioned, we are raising those two structures to be in compliance with flood requirements. So the first floor goes from, I believe that one's what, eight, around eight feet? I can't, it's too small for me to read, but eight, eight. So we're going, we're raising that up to nor this, this plan will be revised to show the elevation 14. So you are going up six feet in elevation and that's for flood compliance. The, the, the structure itself, the height stays at the 33, six?
Yes.
Correct? Yep. So that number, the 45, six, goes up consecutively with that, with that rise. But the height of the building, so there's no additional story. There's no increase in height of each story. The, the height of the structure stays the same. We're just raising the whole structure so that we comply with, with the flood requirements.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to postulate that therein lies the problem with this project as currently proposed. By coming into flood compliance, you're losing elevation to work with without losing elevation on the other end because you raised the base elevation, but you're, you're not losing it the way it's currently proposed because you're raising your height to what that new base elevation is going to be for the difference between that. This property is a coastal property that has flooding issues. That's why it's proposed to raise it. And that's why you've done such work to show that. But I don't think that provides a pass to correspondingly raise the height of this building, a corresponding amount, so that there's no net loss in the overall height of a structure that can be put here. That is an inherent problem with this property being on the coast and subject to the coastal systems that exist there.
So, so Mr. Heine, just so you understand, when we measure maximum building height under the zoning code, it's the vertical distance from the lower of the pre-construction grade or the finished grade to the highest point of the building, et cetera, et cetera. The present buildings, and we're only talking about the main and the Eastwick Inn buildings are presently non-conforming with respect to building height. We can increase that building height. We can make it, I guess, more non-conforming with a special permit if granted by the zoning board of appeals. And again, the zoning board of appeals is expressed to us and we don't have a final decision, obviously, that we appear to have satisfied our burden, which is to demonstrate that the extension of that non-conformity is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's, that's the standard that we need to meet to satisfy that. I think there's a general consensus that we would like to, across the board, preserve the existing buildings and make use of this site. But there is a legal regulatory pathway to authorize the elevation of this building. You know, many communities, in order to address floodproofing and flood-resistant construction, actually build into their zoning bylaw the ability to elevate buildings to comply with current flood standards. And so they do relax their maximum building height in order to accomplish that because they want to encourage people to, to improve their properties to make it more flood-resoning. Unfortunately, COASIN hasn't done that. I would hope that they would consider that in the future. But, but we've requested this relief from the zoning board. And, and as I said, there is a regulatory pathway to accomplish this.
So that, that leads to my follow-up question. And Attorney Brodsky, you can respond or a member of your team can. Why are you only going up to elevation 14 on half this property? You still have the other half of this property. When I say other half, it's the elevations that I'm seeing on your as-built drawings. In the order of seven, 7.1, 7.2, 7.9. It's over in the area of the parking and also in the area of the walkway that would go around that. And to your point, Attorney Brodsky, when you talked about alternatives for parking, you talked about those being in the rare instance where someone was there during storm events. One month to the day, on September 22nd, I saw this property in a day like today, unseasonably mild, with some wind. And the property that we're talking about now was flooded. The walkway on the exterior of it, as it currently exists, was underwater. Water came into the center of the property where there's currently parking and an turnaround area that was flooded. That wasn't a storm event day. So I'd like to get an answer as to why only half this property is currently, as currently proposed, is going to be elevated to a new elevation of 14.
Yes, sir. So I think you misunderstood. The new boathouse building, that structure is going to be elevated at the design flood elevation that will comply with the Tenth Building Code. It was already designed to do that. So that building does comply and will be above, again, the design flood elevation for velocity zone. You may also remember that we are proposing to construct a retaining wall and to fill a portion of the site to elevate the parking. And we've elevated or proposing to elevate it as much as we can while also maintaining safe access to the street. So again, we are proposing to fill portions of the site to elevate that out of, or elevate it as high as we can get it without, without sacrificing the ability to safely enter the site. And so, you know, unfortunately, large portions of COASIS, all as many other software communities are within the flood plain. We've got an existing site. We're proposing a new use that we think is a beneficial use. All of the buildings are going to comply with the flood-resistant construction requirements of the Tenth Building Code. And we're using best management practices to improve the resiliency of the property as a whole. You know, we're doing the best we can with a challenging site.
Yeah, I do acknowledge the challenges to this site. I'm not in necessarily agreement with, because it's being raised at base elevation and that provides an opportunity to, to further exceed existing regulation for maximum height of a building. If you're out of compliance now by two feet, maintaining the same order of magnitude of out of compliance would be something I could get my head around. But exceeding that because you're doing what you, is necessary. I mean, if we all just reasonably minds can say it's necessary to implement these types of flood protections. But, you know, I think the argument lies in some people, well, that gives me a buy to increase the height on that. There's a neighbor across the street that I believe spoke at our last meeting on this. And it sounded like there were some, some discussions between that neighbor and the owners of this parcel. You know, that neighbor would be directly impacted by their ability to see towards the harbor sightlines by having a structure that would exceed elevations as they already exist out of compliance by moving them up to a higher elevation. That is a neighbor, that's a particular example of some, someone in that neighborhood that would be impacted by further exceeding height requirements as the project is currently proposed. So I just wanted to make those points, vocalize those points, and I'll let my, my colleagues pick it up from here.
Thank you, Mr. Heine. I mean, fundamentally, and I'm saying this politely, it's the issue for the zoning board to make that determination here. I'm not trying to minimize your concerns. I believe that Tedeschi's or across the street said that they were supportive of the project. They had some questions regarding the alignment of the crosswalk, which I think we've addressed. And they did ask some questions regarding flooding, which we've answered by explaining that we are going to be elevating the land form, which should, you know, it's not going to cause any, any additional flooding impacts to any of the abutters. But thank you.
Thank you. Jim, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Chair Callahan. I wanted to say that I very much appreciated the presentation of the materials that we, that we requested earlier a few minutes ago this evening. I did check our material set and I looked at the website and I couldn't find any of those. So I would respectfully request that those materials are provided to us for review.
All right. Cassandra, our next meeting is November 6th, correct?
Yes, your next two meetings are November 6th and then November 20th.
What do we have on the 6th?
The 6th, you have your last public, section five public hearing.
That's it?
I believe that's all. I don't think you have anything else right now.
Can we all get everything together by the 6th? Everybody, both sides, can you have?
Chair Callahan, I'm making notes. Again, I can't explain why Weston Sampson doesn't have the construction methodology and the site plan protection. We clearly sent it. So something got lost when stuff was put on the website. We can send that to them directly. I believe that Ms. Lamb did mention that those additional details were prepared this afternoon. We're happy to send those to the Weston Sampson. I think that's the only thing that's missing.
Directly with the expedite, so.
It's sort of minor. Again, it was our hope that we were close to discussing conditions and closing the public hearing. But obviously, if the board's not comfortable, we need to run this through Weston Sampson.
We should be able to wrap up on the 6th, I would assume. We will start working on a draft decision on our end in a minute. All right, could I entertain a motion to continue this to November 6th at 6:30?
Motion.
All moved.
Next second.
Second.
All in favor of, well, actually, before I do that, is there anybody from the public who has anything to add? I'm not seeing anyone. Looks like everybody's affiliated with the project, but I'm not sure on that. I'm not seeing nothing. Then all in favor of that motion to continue this?
Black Brewer, aye.
I'm Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deidre Hobbs, and aye.
Booze McPhies, aye.
Are you anticipating being done with the zoning board before then?
We have zoning conservation on November 7th and zoning on November 12th.
Yep.
Well, I, again, we'll start working on a draft decision on our side and hopefully we can wrap this up on the 6th.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
All right. Thank you. Okay. The next matter we have is discussion of a modification request by Close Solar LLC regarding the solar array up at the landfill. Do we have someone here who's representing the applicant?
Yes, you do.
And do we, do we have the, Cassandra, that we can put up on the screen, the particular condition that we're looking to modify?
Yes, I have a copy of the decision at the ready.
Thank you. All right, I'm sorry. Might be waiting on me. All right, who who is here for the applicant or the part the project owner?
I am Gordon Dean. I'm the uh president of the manager of the of CoSolar. I was expecting my staff person, Scott Kaplan, to also be joining. I don't know if he.
He's here. Uh we can advance him.
He's the one who actually manages the project. I'm I'm just I'm just here to add the.
You're just the the figurehead, the power.
That's right.
Um, all right, Mr. Kaplan, if you could tell us when you're all set, uh what it is you're looking to change with the previous permit?
Scott, you're muted.
You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry about that.
If you can identify yourself and then let us know what it is you're looking for.
Yeah, Scott Kaplan. I'm with CoSolar. I'm the project manager. Uh Gordon Dean is, I think he's on the call as well, um is the president and owner of the project and Palmer Management. Um so we're looking, so the condition E one for our uh permit that we received from the planning board back in twenty seventeen um required us or requires us each year or requires us to use an engineer to take measurements at specific locations on the top of the landfill uh and specifically at certain area, certain ballast. So and when I say ballast, uh the solar panels are actually held up by the racking and the panels are held up by cement ballast. Uh and there are a number of them, but the condition uh for some reason just requires us to look at fifteen of those. And when we received that condition, we were, we actually pushed back quite uh quite a bit. And it was basically the consultant for the town um kind of the last minute was uh making this a requirement, even though as far as I as far as we know, there's no other landfills or solar projects on landfills that require uh any of them to do differential settlement. Uh and differential settlement is basically uh you know, the the land, the solar panels and the ballast, they're made of cement and they're on top of the landfill and uh you know, they're 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 quite heavy. But uh i- if there were issues with the project based on what our landfill engineers told us, it would have been evident by now. In other words, the panels would have been sinking into the into the landfill and there would have, you know, we we would have had to bring that to the attention of the not only the planning board, but uh Mass DEP. And the the actual calculations that we do, um if anything's over two inches as far as, and this is over time, so since twenty seventeen, then we need to bring that before the attention of the planning board. Of the fifteen ballast that or the fifteen calculations that we do, none of them are close to even the two inches. And the two inches, as far as I know, was basically something random that the consultant had brought up. And there's I didn't, we never saw any documentation for why there were, why this calculation was uh required of us to begin with. But we do it every year. Nothing's ever shown up. Our landfill engineer, who was actually out there today, and I'm going to be submitting a report after I review what her findings, although on her correspondent, she said, I don't see anything new out there, which including, she looks for differential settlement too. Um and again, it's just after five years, we've been there since, we've been there seven, something would have shown up by now and nothing's showing up. And I think and the way we so we, the way the condition reads right now, we we edited it just to basically say, let our landfill engineer go out there, take a look. If something looks amiss, then she'll let us know and then we'll have to let the planning board know and then we're going to let Mass DEP know. Um for now, it's just been some sort of thing that we've we've done each time, but I don't. And and we would look at ever all the ballast. This is kind of fifteen random locations that were chosen for one reason or another. And like I said, it's just kind of been something that we found kind of unnecessary all these years and nothing's ever really come of it. And it does cost a lot of money to do the calculations, to get somebody out there, get an engineer out there and do the calculations. And you know, we have a lot of issues for O and M wise and getting the project to producing where it should be. And this is just something that we think has been unnecessary all these years. So I don't know if Gordon has.
Understood. Understood. Let me, Clark, you're the only one, I think, who was still was there at the time.
That's true, yeah.
Context of why what what this was about? If you remember.
No, I don't really, I don't really recall um exactly what the impetus for for this was, but um.
I suppose on the landfill, there was the fear that it would settle over time and
Right.
compromise the array. Um.
That's correct. I mean.
Did we have a peer review at the time? Did we have an engineer who was looking at this for our side?
There was a consultant who was.
Probably Modulowski.
Correct. I think that was his name. Yeah. Yeah, that sounds right.
All right. Yeah, Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, what's the design parameter for the lifetime of this landfill as it's currently designed? Can you answer that, Scott?
So we have a twenty year lease with the town, so we're into year seven and.
I'm telling the landfill with the that's been designed for how long to be there?
So our lease is for the leases.
At your lease, Scott.
Are you asking whether how long the array is going to be there or the?
How long is the landfill as currently designed upon which this array has been placed? What's the what's the expected life of this landfill? Is it going to be there for another fifty, hundred, seventy years? What is designed for that?
Forever.
Forever. Okay.
It's not going away. It's not. It's not. It's not operating. It's it's it's.
I understand that. So over that lifetime, people that are in the know with regard to landfills and how they're designed, it's been five years now or seven years since you put this array on top of it?
Correct.
Settling can occur at year seven, the day after you were there today. It could occur at year fifteen. It could occur at year thirty. It could occur at year seventy five. Landfills, as they are designed, do have some movement with them, depending on how the wastes that are within them break down over time and how they interact with the in aerobic environment beneath the cap upon which you put an array.
Correct.
Kevin, if I understand correctly, they have an obligation to report to D to both us and to DEP if it starts to settle.
And and by virtue of them doing, reporting that they're doing now, that's how they're reporting it. I just, I'm trying to understand the potential issue here.
Well, the issue, the issue, well, the issue that's before us tonight is is this random or purportedly random inspection regime that the planning board set seven years ago make any sense in light of the otherwise statutory obligation to report to both us and DEP if something fails up there?
I just want to.
That's a question is, do we need to do this yearly inspection, not whether we're going to report it when it, if and when it happens?
I just want to be clear about one thing. And I I so when we do these calculations, it's strictly for the planning board. This is not a requirement of DEP. Uh DEP would be more concerned if there was obvious visual settling than than we besides the calculations we do a, and like I said, it was she was out there today. She she does a landfill inspection. If there's something obvious that's wrong, that may be affecting the cap. DEP does not require this. This is, this was one of the arguments we made against it at the time. And there was pushback from the consultant to do these random calculations, even though it's a small portion of all the ballast that exists at the landfill.
It it's not even clear to me what these calculations are of. Do you, with the expenses involved, are you having a surveyor go out there and look for differences of two inches or more at fifteen random locations within the existing array?
That's that's correct.
And that required at other applications for photovoltaic systems atop landfills at other sites like this in Massachusetts?
That's correct. Mass DEP does not require it.
And this was put in place by the planning board, unique to this site, seven years ago, and you have to do this annually. And it's for that you're seeking relief.
Correct. And it has been done annually and we've not seen anything close to any.
But outside of this, you would still do regular annual DEP required reporting?
Yes. So the landfill inspection that was done today is going to be reported to the planning board as and that same report is filed with Mass DEP.
Um I'd like to make a, oh, sorry.
I was just looking for clarification on all this, but I don't have any further comments.
And and one, the the town actually has its own, I think it's biennial landfill inspection as well with a separate, I think it's with uh, uh I think of a group does it, but uh you can ask Brian Joyce. But they so they they do annually, they're looking at the gas uh landfill gas or the methane monitoring, right? And then every other year, they're doing the same thing that our landfill uh consultant does as well, which is inspecting a landfill. So you're basically getting two different groups, although it's, you know, it's biennial for the town, but you get two different firms kind of doing the same thing.
Um I'd just like to make a a request, which because this is coming to us and we don't have the ability to look back and actually understand why we made this requirement, I would recommend that we look back in the in the documentation to know what the justification was. If the justification was a preference to an individual that is out of alignment with what is typical industry standard, then we should be able to to identify that from that discussion. And then we could have that as the basis of justifying shutting it down or continuing its operation. But to not look at the documentation and understand why we set it to begin with, I think, is um uh is not prudent.
Just to clarify, Amy, I don't think you're talking shutting down the the use of this photovoltaic array. It's the relief of this point that the operators have come to this board for and just presented to us.
Yes. And and what I'm saying is, when we made the decision to have a disinspection, there was a reason for it. And so until we go back in the documentation and find out what was that justification, it we're not being prudent. We should look at what we knew then. And then if 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 what we did was be over critical of a problem, then we can make an adjustment, but we'll at least know that we have a a reason why we are doing what we're doing.
And Cassandra, have you looked at the file?
Uh I have looked at the file. It's pretty lengthy. Um there's a number of different documents in it. I haven't.
Well, all right. I mean, is there is there a, if if Modulowski was our consultant, is he have any written report in that file?
Hmm.
Because if he didn't, and he just expressed this verbally, we're not going to reconstruct his reasoning. If it's not reflected in minutes, we're not going to reflect, we're not going to be able to reconstruct his reason. But.
But Modulowski would have done a a review in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a number of documents in here, I'm sure. I'm not seeing any of them, just looking at the titles of the documents that specifically say that they're from Modulowski without going into each and every one of them. I'm sure that at the time, he did give something in writing. I'm sure that it is also in the minutes. Um I don't have the minutes in the file.
Then let's do this. Let's let's continue this to the sixth, since it's going to be a fairly quick night. And um if you could, Cassandra, take a look at the file, see if there's anything in writing, be it minutes or something from Modulowski or whoever, if it wasn't Modulowski, that just you know, explains the reasons for this. And then we'll make a decision on the sixth, whether this can go forward as a minor modification, no hearings, or it would require a hearing with a major modification. My 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 gut is that this is a minor modification, but let's see what the reasoning was.
Okay, I can look into that.
I mean, you'll have a couple of weeks to dig through it, but you know, I don't know if, Clark, if you ever have any time to go up and help or look at it, it might just jog some of your memory of what went on during those hearings. But up to, you know, if you.
Yeah, I I mean, I think any notes, any notes in getting a um a copy of the decision and and actually reading it would probably help. But if the town's doing the same thing every other year that this has a one year requirement, every year requirement, seems kind of like a reasonable ask. And and I also concur, this sounds like a a minor modification without any additional information. And and it and it doesn't hurt to to get that um.
I'd be prepared, I'd be prepared to move and approve this as a minor modification right now. But if if the rest of the board wants to see whatever the justification.
I think we could do that. We can say it's minor. Can't we, counsel?
I think if we, why don't we just look at it and then continue this and deal with it in November?
Fine, I'm indulging that and and saying we'll do this.
And let's not judge it one way or the other.
But you 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 know, the difference between a minor modification and a major modification, a major modification, we have to open the whole public hearing and and we're not just changing it, tweaking a a detail of the decision.
All right, uh can someone make a motion to continue this to the sixth at six thirty?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
I'm Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobbs, and aye.
David McPhish, aye.
Okay, all right. Dean, Mr. Kaplan, I expect we'll wrap this up on the sixth.
Thank you very much.
I apologize.
Thanks. All right, thank you. All right, um next thing we have is we have minutes of September eighteen twenty fifth and then our public forum of the thirtieth to approve. I have a motion to approve all three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Clark. Alphabetical, Clark.
Clark Brewer, aye.
I'm Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobbs, and aye.
David McPhish, aye.
Okay, so that's going to conclude our business for tonight. I got a, I'm due for the advisory committee probably by eight, but we've still have a small matter, a quick matter on um executive session to discuss the litigation related to Jerusalem Road Lane, Jerusalem Road Estates.
Can we do that now?
No, we we have a brief issue to do. Yeah, we have a brief issue to to address tonight because of a time constraint. And then we're going to discuss it in more detail, uh the litigation on in another executive session on November sixth. Okay, so if I could have, so what we'll do is we'll have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. Um we will then log out of this. There is a Zoom link for the executive session. Everybody will go back in um to the members of the public, such as we have any out there. We will not be coming back into regular session after this executive session. So so um I'll make the motion that we adjourn to an executive session to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobbs, and aye.
David McPhish, aye.
All right, so log off here and then look for in the town emails, you should have the link for the executive session. Thank you all.